Yeah. Chris, can you hear me? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Nice, nice that we're finally here tonight.
Long overdue, and again, I can't thank you enough for all your help with this.
We'll, we'll, we'll celebrate with a ribbon cutting out at the property when you're in there and it's all fixed up.
It sounds.
That'll be, that'll be my thing.
Yeah, that'll sound, that, that, that sounds good.
Alrighty, I'm, I'm just gonna mute myself here because I got stuff in the background, so we'll, we'll be on in a little bit.
Yeah, alright, sounds good. Yeah. Yeah, well, it should. Yeah.
Okay.
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 Recording.
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 Yeah, it's, it's unmuted.
Okay. Brooklyn zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. Public hearing is conference and also in person. Folks in Zoom conference are waiting. Have a roll call for you. Just wanted to give a quick overview of how we run this meeting.
No.
Okay.
I might have to hold.
Just to give you a quick overview of how we run this meeting, we go through new business and old business. The new business portion of the meeting, we hear the applications that you heard before we see. Okay, so when your application is called, you're asked to come up, say your name, and give a brief presentation over there of your application and what hardship you've been enduring or whatever, in some way or another. Once you've done that, we'll have a question and answer session during the new business portion of the meeting. Once we hear all the applications, we close the applications during the new business portion of the meeting. We go into old business and we vote on the applications that we heard during the first part of the meeting. What's important is we can't introduce any new information during the second part of the meeting. Second part of the meeting is just for the panel members, board members to vote in either approve or disapprove of the application based on what they heard during the first portion of the meeting. So it's very important if you have any information to you know, to share that you do it during the question and answer session of the meeting. Any, any questions?
I'm gonna just jump in. So this is in person and hybrid via Zoom. If anyone's calling in, it's like one of the callers right now is getting a lot of feedback. You can mute your phones in your Zoom while you're waiting to talk. That'll help reduce some of the feedback.
Thank you. That's a lot better. Sorry, you had a question back there?
Yes, will the citizens be able to speak on the application?
Absolutely, that's what we do. We ask for comments in favor, comments in opposition to the application. We ask for staff comments. Once we ask for staff comments, we'll make a, make a motion to either continue the application or close the hearing on the application based on what we heard. Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. My name is Tony Frankman. Vice chairman is one of the clubs. Corey Whitehead. Corey Whitehead is in here. Brian Zelik is on, right? Sandra Capola is on, right? And I, we also have reporting secretary Kristen Dellman who's there. Okay, alright, so we're all set. Okay, first hearing is ZDA 2021-08, 2576 Berlin Turnpike, 27-1, 120-7. Samuel Alejandro, remain out of Berlin requesting a motor vehicle location approval for a used car dealership for Berlin's own renovation. Is owned by MJTK LLC, Colonel Sullivan. Thank you for the application.
Speaker, Colonel Sullivan.
Well, while we're waiting, whoever's calling in, last caller number is 1047. Got a lot of feedback that we can hear over here. Can you please mute your phone?
I'm sorry, I will.
Thank you.
Just sitting over here?
Yeah, using mic there.
As you probably already know, then it's been.
Have you signed in?
Oh, I didn't sign.
Yeah, everybody said, oh, the sign that she had to vote him out. Everybody has to sign in for legal reasons.
Thank you. No, not if you're just here for the meeting, just you can just join.
My name is Colonel Sullivan. You probably already know that property that we're talking about has been Carl, I gotta say, going back more than 50 years. I purchased the property from Bob Bishop. Probably many of you know. The property had a lot of history. Some of the history was very negative. Some of the people that are my age remember the old Bill of Gear days. And when I talked to Bob Bishop about buying the property, my buddy Stan was doing cars, was doing cars in Hartford. He really, really, really wanted to get out of Hartford. He didn't like the way they did business there and just different things he wanted to get out. And I said, if I find the right place, I'll buy a place and we'll put something together. So I bought it and was unfortunately, it was just before the pandemic, so it turned into a tremendous nightmare. But we spent quite a bit of time, at least a good six to nine months just cleaning the property up, which I think Adam has been showing you some photos after. It was basically might have been one of the worst properties in the world. I don't know all the properties, but it had to be in the top five of just a junkyard that was assembled there over the years. Because Bob got on in years and Bob really didn't work at the property anymore. He owned it with no mortgage, so he didn't really care that much about it. And I'd had a car dealership before in Plainville for well over 30 years. Tremendous, tremendous reputation in Plainville. If you know anybody in Plainville, zoning police department, anywhere you call, they'll tell you we were in a Class A operation in Plainville. And again, we spent a tremendous amount of time, I think I'd have to go to Adam, look at the pictures. There was 90, the number is 90, junk cars on the property, some were sunken in money. So far that they actually lifted them up with a crane, not a crane, but a, like a tobacco smashed back. It was a little phone came out of the night because they couldn't even put them on a truck. There was three trailer trucks that had been there so long, tires were frozen, I don't mean frozen from snow or that kind of stuff, frozen just like a rock like this tail right here. Then we had a little cut piece by piece by piece. Trailer trucks, we had it cut with the sawzall and torches piece by piece. Nothing you could do with it. Not gonna drive it down the Berlin turnpike. It was three boats on the property. We got lucky with one of the boats. We brought it up top and put a for free sign on there and it was gone. I don't even know if you ever made the water or not, but couple of big heavy trucks, just stuff that was not, about at least one garage to somebody for $500 a month and out of the 90 cars, 60 of them belonged to one person and all 60 went straight through the junkyard, straight through. Not one car was salvageable. They're treating it as a, as a park yard. I thought my guy sent Adam pictures of the way the lot is now. But he didn't send them before. If you're welcome to take a walk. I think Adam or somebody, was there a week ago, was that you Adam taking pictures?
Yeah, I was there. I did a second here. Once I scrolled through the recipes, I'll show the three photos that I took from basically the parking lot, kind of looking at the back. They were included in your packets.
I mean, it was a rough property and I've got a long way to go, at least another year to make the property be what I want it to be, like my property was in Plainville, which is a pristine, I got a beautification worth once for the, for the property. So the bottom line is there's a dealer's license, two dealers' licenses on the property now on the other side of the property. You might know Lou Presta has been there for I think about 30 years now. He controls one of the licenses. The other license was Bob Bishop's, which is now my license. But in order for him to really have his own business, he's got to really get his own license. In order for him to get his own license, I gotta have it zoned so we can do what we gotta do. I really think that maybe, unless Sam, if you have anything you want to offer, say Sam.
Just a little bit about myself. Everyone is doing, my name is Samuel Alejandro. Really, really grateful that I, you know, I know this guy here for many years. Give me another, I don't know, opportunity, but another chance for me to fully do this used car dealership. I sell full time. I always did it part time. Actually, retired correctional officer. I did it for 22 years. I've been retired for three years. But yes, just finding another, something else to do. You know, I tell everyone this is gonna be like my second career. I really enjoy it. For the fact, for the past probably three, three, four years, you know, I've been around in the area here, Townsburg. And I'm just, I really love it here, I really do. I'm just hoping that, you know, get this opportunity. You know, you know, get this business going. Like Kevin said, you know, he did a lot of work, a lot of work, you know, to get that property up to date because it was, it was really, really bad. You know, I appreciate him trying to really, really accomplish this goal that I'm, I'm trying to.
One more thing that I want to add. It's funny because he said at his age, he can, you know, this is his opportunity for his, make his mark. And like for me, in 19 months, I'll be 70 years old. So for me, this is my last shot. This is, it's all going. It's gonna work or it's not gonna work. And this will be my retirement. The property is gonna be, the income on the property will be my retirement. So and if the zoning is open there anytime, like we always were, we get involved, if you look back in Plainville, which I really wanted to go to Plainville, but somehow this came up and we got all things worked where we're supposed to do, but I was very embedded in the community. I'll be happy to ride with you. We donated to Carter Project graduation for 12 years in a row. With the food pantry, the police department, we got embedded in all the activities in the town because that's what we're supposed to do. And right now, I don't put as many hours in the car as I used to because we do a very big food ministry now for the homeless shelters and for single thousands of kids. And just last year, this past December, whole food facility to my ministry, $247,000 worth of food. I haven't taken a Sunday off in five years to deliver food. So we do something. We're doing it right. That's all I want to say to you. Any questions, you're free to ask me.
Chairman, if I could. This is Adam. So I'm in the office. So the photos I'm showing on the screen now, as I'm sharing with the zoom, are the three photos that Kevin referred to earlier when I was able to drive by the site, just looking at it from the parking lot. There's still a couple of elements to be cleaned up, but the main focus was just kind of to look back here to see boats and tractor trailers, whether they were there or not. I didn't see them. So it seems like the back portion of the site has been cleaned up substantially to what it was.
Mr. Sullivan, you say you had a license on that property? We have to know that. I own the whole property. I own the whole property. And there's a license on, if you look at the map, there's there's three properties, there's two properties in one, 2556, 2566, 2576.
I know the property fairly well.
Okay, right. So my license is downstairs, the old Bob Bishop's license. I bought Bob's corporation and then a year later Bob jumped off the corporation. I don't remember you coming for a site approval for your license. It didn't happen because all it is, we, we joined on the corporation and once you join on the corporation, motor vehicle, except the fact that the license never changed yet. The license never changed anything. It's the same dealer number, 400. Nothing ever changes, Adam.
Okay.
Is this going to be, I understand you're gonna be doing used car sales?
Yes.
Repair, are the repairs only gonna be for those cars or for those cars?
No outside car. We never did. In 30 plus years in Plainville, we don't do outside cars. That's not our business.
And then the other question I had is how many cars do you anticipate having on the property? Are they gonna be in the front or the back? How is that going to be seen?
I think in the front, we laid out, and I actually forget the count number. I think it's 40 in front and I think it's 50 in back. Although the back hole is a lot more than 50. I think those are the only two numbers that we used. And I spent an extensive amount, an extensive amount of time with John Flinner, who's one of the local guys here in the to, you know, to sort it out and do it the proper way so that it wouldn't cringe, you wouldn't bother or do anything.
Where are you going? 40 cars up in front of that building?
You know, you have the map. We actually wrote them down. It might be 34 if you look at it because it's on the sign that I have to go and show you.
Got the, the what site plan that was distributed, that is just letting off the app. So this site plan that was distributed, part of your packets is for the 2576 property, that smaller building to the north that's not shown on the plan is the Presta garage. And they're all sort of part of this unified.
Or so, and that's gonna include both problems?
So that's, that's one of the things for staff. Staff wanted to have clarified this part of this hearing is what the delineation is between the two operations, what's car storage is in the front, what's in the back. This property has, and the property to the north, as, you know, was Duckett's garage back in 1950, whatever. And it always sort of treated, even in permit documents, et cetera, as sort of one parcel. But the actual delineation of where cars are being stored, where they're not being stored, where they've been displayed, staff couldn't find any, you know, existence of a site plan that showed all of that. So this, this plan should have some more definition as part of, if the board chooses to approve, where the cars are approved to be, how many, et cetera.
I'm gonna say Lou, Lou, he had not actually sold a car in, I don't know how many, I'll just say even the last five years. So he doesn't use any frontage for any car sales.
But you're still infringing on the property that he's renting from you if you're putting 34 cars, because I count 25 spaces on what
On the map, the way I landed out?
On the map I have here, on the drawing I have here.
Just take a look at it to make sure that we got. Maybe I'm missing.
I had a question regarding this working? I had a question regarding the
This is number four. You're right, 25 is the correct number, right? So yeah, 25 is the correct number.
Okay.
Sale of cars. Like I give you an example of drive auto. They're not allowed a certain strip on the turnpike. It's required. Is this a strip required by Is this a strip required by the state? You can't park any cars. And I, you know, what, what is that strip, what's the size of that strip?
I'll stop, man, I don't know.
So, so we have, um, in the past, the not accepted. Or, or approved, have this board approve any parking that's within the state right of way. All the spaces had to be shown off of the right of way, so if you look at this map here, um, that, that's on the screen, the. Property line, there's the island. Along the highway, along the edge of pavement for the highway, but then all those spaces that are above up to it. Are for the most part in, within the state right of way, so they could not.
Yeah.
Be, um. Encountered as spaces unless they have.
Few times.
Yeah, unless they have approval from the state to rent.
It's thirteen spaces you've been was.
Um. Can that park cars there?
Well, I mean, on the grass part, they told me it goes back fifteen feet from the road, from the state highway. And we're well past that, I mean. We can't park anywhere on the, on the island as you speak, we're on the other side of the island.
Right, but it's a twenty five foot right away for the state of Connecticut. And that island is about fifteen feet.
So if you were to, this is more interesting, if you were to look at the, the plan, and Adam, I don't know if you can point to. On the plan where this line is, I'm sorry, right here.
Yep.
Is actually the property line, so any encroachment on this side of the property line requires approval from the state.
Okay.
To use as parking, so there, where this board can't approve parking. That is not on land, it's authorized for your use.
We have to move the cars back a few feet, what you're saying.
If you can maintain the, the travel way or two way.
Yeah.
Traffic, which is twenty four.
Yep.
So you'd have about ten feet that.
We've talked to him.
That's plus twelve, probably twelve feet, which is not an eighteen feet space.
I don't anticipate a problem, we already thought that you, they've already came out. They said it would not affect, but if you want in writing, we can get that in writing, because that's. What we're showing you is what it's been for fifty years, so it's not like we're wants you to change anything, very interested, you're going crazy, we can get that in writing for you to put your files. And back the cars up until that time. Create a little bit of a hardship, but. That's your last year and a half, I don't think getting harder than that.
I don't know about anybody else here, but I have a hard time approving something with a. It's not correct. You know, this thing needs to be corrected, we've done this in the past. And it should be done now and every time we do it, so it's, I, I believe it needs, we need the letter from the DOT. Or state of Connecticut approving that before that I would be able to approve.
So how many, how many parking spots are you showing in front?
Thirteen.
Thirteen spots in front. So what we have to do for now is move back to the distance to satisfy. This board, and part of the cars the other way facing north or south doesn't make a difference, and leave that space. We can approve it subject to that, getting the letter, and then moving back to where they originally are. But to hold the entire thing up because of that one. Create a letter of undue hardship.
We've held these up in the past because of that, because of this right away from the state of Connecticut, so it's not really a hardship, uh. You know, it's just taking more time to get it done, but we held these up in the past and, you know, we can't, uh.
In the company that joins me, you know, the, I forget his name now, the office building. On the ability of talking about, if you're facing my building, look to the south. Uh, the office building's got the lease signed up there for the last five years. His parking places are laid out the exact same way, you got the island, then you got his parking places. There's not a problem, open down the entire strip the exact same way, so. I, I, listen, you gotta do what you gotta do, but if you come to my lot, look to the left, see the office building. And see his parking spaces that he's laid out and got approved for, they match up with my car lot, and his island is the same, everything's exactly the same. If you go down the whole Berlin turnpike and go in the other car, it's everything's the exact same. Nobody's saying move off twenty five feet.
That's not correct, that is absolutely not correct, they forced them to move off and they have been cited for having the cars too far too close to the road in the past.
You talking about the lot right next to me?
I'll talk about the other dealers right now, and, and they've got a much bigger, uh, median, or they've got a much bigger island that separates.
The office building next to me?
I have no problem with a site location on this property, my problem is, the site location is not being approved with the proper documentation at this point.
Yeah, this needs to be, uh. This needs to be, um, documented properly, and I guess it needs to be, uh.
Maureen or Adam, would we have the ability to give almost like a, a partial approval to say that. We can approve what's within the town, however, for the other slots, it's dependent on state approval. We keep ourselves out of that part, I'm not sure if we have that as an option.
Um, you, I, um, recollection from. I'm thinking happened on another was that no spaces within the right of way were approved, the other spaces as shown on the plan were, and then. Um, so conditional approval with those being.
Okay.
I think is. A possibility. And then if the, the lease with the state or some other documentation comes in, um. We would determine then whether that required a return here for a modification to the plan, or if we can handle that administratively.
Is the other board member satisfied with that? Are the other board members satisfied with their explanation of that?
What if the state does not approve the, the parking?
Well, like I told Sam for a long time, if the state doesn't approve the parking, and, and like, uh, Louis just said here. We approve it, we don't approve those, we approve the rest of the parking spaces. And I go to the DOT, if the DOT says no, my motto was always, I didn't have to buy the Berlin turnpike, today you can sell cars in the cornfield. Either we have to put it behind the fence, we put it behind the fence. The, uh, the, the, all the business today is done by internet, it's not done exposure, especially going sixty miles an hour on one way. Highway, sixty is actually slower than that road, I was watching. Um, so if they don't approve it, the journey continues, it is what it is, it might even take me two or three months to approve, but.
You see the size of that buffer on your property next door. That right away is double the size of, of that right away, that buffer is double the size of your buffer.
I see that from here.
So I, I guess, you know, I, I said, we've done this before with that situation, with the right away, that caused a problem, and I just want to make sure that, that. That you ducks in order before we go ahead and approve it, because if we wanna, if we, if we approve something like this, we could have a half a dozen people come ringing on us. And we don't want that.
Right. Well, it just puts the pressure on me, gets the DOT, you got this, proved immediately, like Maureen said, if you can do it administratively after that. Then we can park cars, if not, they park behind it, it's all on the internet based anyways today, it's better off, but for me, I don't really care.
Any issues with folks right here under conditional approval?
As long as staff is agreeable to it, you can do it.
So it's nice to work up, like a workable plan.
So for the boards, um, what we would do is we have to take a, a plan and attach it to the license that. We put our signature on, so we would X off those and say not approved for, um, for motor vehicle displays or not, you know. I would note it as, as in the right of way, that calls to, um. DMV's attention that these are not authorized spaces, and then, so they, uh, probably would not need to get a new site plan, but they get. They have this staple to their motor vehicle thing that we sign on.
Sure.
Just like we do with any conditions you put on that. Right on the plan and on the license, um, document itself.
Any other questions? I have no, no, thank you.
Okay.
Just two things, one, remember you have, uh, someone on the Zoom, I'm not sure if, if you've seen it, Ryan, I believe, uh, you had anything to say.
Ryan, yes, there he is.
Yeah, just looking around, still got one up there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with everything.
Uh, and then the second is just to clarify, uh, we talked about the front, in terms of the car storage in the back, what was the proposed number of vehicles in the back? Just because that needs to be included on there, it's not the money in it on the site plan as.
Fifty, but it may increase now, we may have to bring thirteen or fifteen cars, you know, they're up front now, you have to put them in the back now to. You know, change, so, I would say sixty five. Actually, you know, let me correct all that, leaving fifty, it doesn't make any difference because. I think my total number of fifty, sixty five cars is plenty to have a car lot, you don't need a hundred cars in a car lot. You don't need that. I used to sell, I used to stack forty cars and sell thirty cars a month, you turn it every single month, you don't need a hundred cars.
Is there a limit on the size of the lot, the number of cars?
Or something like storage like this, it's not like it's people coming in and out and parking with, with that, it's.
Yeah, nobody's allowed in the backyard, there's signs, that game is locked all day long, nobody goes in the backyard, they want to see the car, we bring it up, we don't do that.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition to the application? Staff comments?
Uh, the only other thing I would add besides just, uh, when you get to the second half of the meeting. identification of the storage and parking is, uh. As the applicant mentioned, cleanup of the site has been ongoing since he purchased the property, uh, staff would. Would like some sort of condition, if an approval decision was made, to continue that, to continue to clean up the site for any remaining unapproved or unauthorized storage vehicles, abandoned vehicles, that sort of like that. Aren't just part of the car sale use, uh, you know, want it to just be wrecked cars, not that they would, but this is an ongoing element of it.
Thank you, Adam.
Make a motion to close the application already.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Not. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Take a roll, Adam.
Uh, on the motion closing, it's just right on the line, I think we're good.
Okay. Hey, CBA. Twenty twenty one dash oh nine, one ninety seven Episcopal Road, that four dash four block eighty one lot seven. Jeff Carbone, Olive Branch Enterprises LLC is requesting an alcohol uses location approval for an outdoor patio looking for me. As Slater's Grill and Bar for Berlin's under regulation eleven B, property is owned, is owned GI two. And is owned by FLM Enterprises LLC, Fred Mercantino. Speaking for the application.
Uh, you're, you're not presenting for the applicant though, they're asking for that.
So you're speaking for that application.
Anyone online? The applicant didn't indicate.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had, I was on mute, I apologize, I'm here, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm the general contractor on behalf of that property, and I will be submitting this evening. So what we're proposing is a.
Just state your name for the record, just.
Sure, yep, sorry, Jeff Carbone with Olive Branch Enterprises.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yep, so what we're proposing is a, um, a concrete patio, approximately sixteen by thirty five. Uh, as shown on the site plan. And, um, would be, um, a six foot privacy fence running parallel to Episcopal with a four foot. Picket fence along the parking lot side that it would be, that would be facing into the parking lot. There will be, um, there will be no outside bar, uh, so it'll be just tables, we're proposing, uh, currently we had seven. Uh, for the COVID restriction, six foot separation. Um, so there, as we submitted it, there would be showing, showing seven tables, seating, uh, four per table. There'll be no live bands, no live, no music of any sort, um, we would like to have a single TV. Uh, mounted between the two doors, the side entry door, yep, right there. Um, there would be an ideal spot to put at least one television there, um, there really isn't nowhere else to put another one, so. Uh, that would be our, really our only, only, um. I, I don't even know if it would really be a sound, usually his TVs, especially, we have one, uh, in his other, uh, facilities, Middletown and Southington. And usually the sound is off, they just, they just show video, so.
Do you have a question? Uh, you indicated at this time that it's going to be seven tables, uh, four per table due to COVID restrictions. When those restrictions are lifted, do you know what their intention is on the number?
Um, well, if, you know, if we could, if they could sit more people, um, obviously from a business perspective, that would be great for, for, for business. Um, if, if there's any reluctance to that, then we'll take what we could get, obviously, but. Uh, we drew it with seven, trying to keep the six foot, um, distance between the tables in, in effect at the time, so.
Aren't the COVID restrictions lifted already for?
Can I clarify a few things on this, this morning speaking, um, I made chairman. The, um, so the planning and zoning commission saw this patio a couple of months ago, I think it was February's P and Z meeting. And approved the outdoor dining, the patio area. The, um, COVID restrictions for the last year since, since last spring have been that outdoor dining is approved. Um, for the year, this year it was extended to March of twenty twenty two. That they don't need any approvals for outdoor dining. Up to this point, including the liquor permit for the patio, um, through March of twenty twenty two. Um, this application that came before the P and Z was in order to make this patio area a permanent outdoor patio area, and that's why they're coming through the approval process. You'll probably see a few others that are doing the same, last year their outdoor patio was around the back of the building. Right, um, I think, yeah, it was, um. May not have been able to be approved back there because of property lines, I'm not sure, um, but they decided to create this permanent space, um, on this side, they relocated. The parking that was there to, uh. To adjust the, um, handicap spaces closer to the Episcopal road, so they're in front of that front wall, um, um, fencing. And, uh, then relocated some of the parking that was in this area right next to it. Anyway, they got that approval, so this is for the liquor permit for the patio.
Where was that property, uh? Where was that property, that outdoor dining before, in the back?
Last year for COVID, they had a tent, they put a tent up out back.
By that, just on the side where the fridge unit is that you see in the back left?
It was a dumpster bed.
Yeah, the dumpster and the, and the prey ass, I think they may have even been into the property, the adjacent property. They had permission to.
Corrupt investment.
Yeah, so just go over that. There's some gravel that's encroaching.
What are the hours you're going to be operating this outdoor patio in that area?
They typically, you know, open for lunch, so, you know, I'd say they start typically serving lunches around eleven, eleven-thirty. And if we could keep it open till ten PM, that'd be wonderful.
This going to affect the number of parking spaces that are available right there at this point?
We restripped it, so we just reshuffled the deck with the, with the parking.
So if I may, that was taken care of by the P and Z approval of the parking. Now there, I did want to mention that the occupancy of the building and the patio, once the COVID restrictions, the next, after next March, have to be balanced out to make sure that their total number of seats still fits within the parking that was available. So they may, may or may not be able to add tables based on that. It was March, it was February, I think. I don't remember the numbers we came up with at that time.
All right.
All right.
Ryan, any questions?
Nope, I'm good. Sorry.
And just one, just want to reiterate on behalf of the owner, he did want to make it clear because we are mindful of the fact that our neighbors, but there will be no live music, we have bands, any, any of that, so. Just wanted, wanted to reiterate, just wanted to reiterate that.
Of the operation, that property owner.
Thank you. Any comments in opposition in favor of the application? Any comments in favor of the application? Comments in opposition? I've got a lot of hands there. Okay, let's start back here. Sure.
I am Jim Simons. I live at sixty-two Vivian Drive and I've lived there since nineteen eighty-seven. And I have to say that over the past thirty years that I've lived there, the last five have become more and more difficult to live there. Between the commercial development in the area that was not supposed to affect the area, that has totally affected the area, and the fast cars that are in the area, and I don't mean the drag racing on the highway because that really doesn't affect us, we hear, but Episcopal Road and Raleigh Street, Deming Road, the area has just become a nuisance. The Sliders Bar, it's not unusual to sit outside of your house at ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock at night or in any of those and hear the noise coming from that, whether it's the music from inside the bar or it's the hooting and hollering coming from the outside of the bar. And then usually, not so much this year, but in the past, usually about one o'clock in the morning, the motorcycles start up and start doing their burnouts coming out of there. And nobody wants to address that problem. So now we're going to put an outside dining area or bar. Really? Show me where the hardship is. You can't prove to me you had a hardship at that place during COVID because the place was full on Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Parking lot was full the whole time during COVID. So where's the hardship? I don't see a hardship. I see just more of a nuisance and a problem for the neighborhood. Our neighborhood, we have seen our values of our property decrease. We have seen motor vehicle accidents on Deming Road in front of Sliders. We have seen a child get hit in the corner of Raleigh, Deming, or Raleigh and Episcopal. We've seen all this. And nobody wants to address it. Nobody. I am strictly opposed to them having an outside facility. And I believe that my neighbors, which fill this room, are going to say the same thing. Enough is enough. They fill that place Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. They have plenty. They don't need to be outside.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, right?
Yep.
Good evening. I'm Fred McBrady. Yes, I will. Good evening. I'm Fred McBrady. I grew up on Episcopal Road. So we're going about sixty years, all right? Now I'm on Vivian Drive, fifty-seven Vivian for the last twenty-two. Sliders has been noisy. As, you know, that bar, even before Sliders was noisy, but we'll go Sliders on. It's noisy at night. You can't put your windows open during the spring and fall. You hear the noise of the smokers, the swearing, the profanities. Again, I agree with Jim as far as the motorcycles go. COVID with the patio in the back, COVID, there was nobody in the restaurants. So we didn't hear a lot of noise with COVID because nobody went out anywhere. Now the activity's picking up and as far as parking spots, you know, to be truthful, that's kind of ridiculous. They just line the streets up where you can't even drive down the road sometimes safely. Again, I just, you know, I, I've witnessed the noise time and time again. I have nothing against Sliders operating as a restaurant inside their facility. We're not trying to stop the gentleman from having his business and have it prosper. We just want to keep our neighborhood as good as we can and as uninterrupted. And I do have some pictures here if the town council, you know, I'm sure you're aware of the area. But if you look across the street, it's only a hundred feet from the nearest house. A six-foot fence is not going to do anything. That's privacy for the people in the patio. But it's not a noise barrier. You could put a twenty-foot fence, it wouldn't matter. At night, noise travels extremely far. And, you know, like I says, it, it just, it is loud and I know the people, all of these people over here are all from Episcopal Road, Vivian Drive, Noelwood Court. And we're strongly against it. And like I says, that they're a hundred foot to seventy-five foot to the closest home. And there's, there've always been issues with noise. And as far as Mr. Fred, the owner of Sliders, taking care of it, if you go over to Episcopal Road and you look at diagonals from where I used to live, two twenty-two Episcopal was where I lived, you can see his dumpsters. He's never done anything in the twenty years he's been there to try to make anything look pretty to, you know, so that concern of his neighbors and, you know, in the residential neighborhood across the street. So I'm definitely opposed and I don't want to just keep, repeat myself. But if you want to take a look at these pictures, I wrote some notes on the back. You'll see the houses, how close they are and the views of Sliders and all the residential areas.
Yeah, Fred, if you give us those, we can't give them back.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
I have them. I have a copy of them.
Put them in the record.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Everybody tell them your vote. Give me your name, sign up, tell them your vote.
Amelia Andura. Amelia Andura, I live on two sixteen Episcopal Road. We purchased this house eight years ago. And I can tell also that we noticed changes in the neighborhood. We moved and the street was pretty quiet, but for the last couple of years, it's just noise, it's really killing. We have two small kids. We cannot keep windows open in the house, not only because of noise, but also because of smoke that's coming from outside, even when people smoking on the parking lot. We can, we can, we can smell the smoke in the house. So now we will have more people outside being small noise, not only from TV. Even though they said they will be turned off, off, but unmuted, but people will be cheering, people will be yelling and talking. So I don't want to repeat my neighbors, but noise is one thing, smoke is second one. And also I know the gentleman pointed out and, sorry, I forgot the name, the dining area was approved a year ago and it's like nothing will change. But in fact, as Fred mentioned, last year was COVID year, there was less people, no one was over there. There was way less car on parking lot and off the road. And it was not a big problem. But now when all restrictions are lifted since eighteen, we can see changes. And those changes just will grow because people have ten, not ten, like permanence, actually building outside. Traffic will increase. There are more people outside than inside and, yeah, our neighborhood will be changing course direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Sir?
My name is Tyler Cummel. I live at twenty-eight Noelwood Court. Our backyard, above us, the backyard, the house directly across, the noise we all heard. We hear them talking at the park. We hear the fire crack that's going off. We hear the fire sprint. As far as trusting anything from Sliders, I find it very hard to accept. All during the pandemic, the parking lot is full. The parking lot is full. How can they be, stay in six feet apart and all this? I happened to pick up a to-go order on a Saturday and the bar was full. I thought it was back a year before. They were sitting elbow to elbow. Nobody had a mask and they're frequent, arousing. The other thing is the park, the parking lot and the cars on the street. If you add more tables, the street is going to get further and further. They're almost down to Emhard Highway. And we're going up the hill. They've been around the corners of Vivian already. And the neighbor has little children. They have little children. When you have that one whole side lane with cars and then we're doing our physical drag racing, if one of their kids happens to step out. Matter of fact, one there in a bad accident a month ago, somebody coming out of the driveway from Sliders got banged into and they almost ended up on your horn.
They did it.
Yeah. No, I see no reason to improve anything. And as far as you thinking that they're going to follow all the rules, a TV outside, just want, somebody hits a home run. Hey, you think they're going to turn it off at one o'clock? Low. That's all. That's my statement.
Thank you, Tyler. Sir? Yeah.
All right. My name is Drew Lantier. I live at forty-four Vivian Drive. Back in twenty seventeen, I pulled down Vivian Drive, went to forty-four Vivian Drive and both in the driveway and was like, I'm definitely not buying this house. It was really, really more of a project than I wanted to take on as a first-time home buyer, right? And when I went in, I kind of fell in love with it, right, for the size and for what I wanted to do. Starting a family, I have two little kids. I have another one in here, but he has a ghost, he's going to be gone. So over, I've been there for four years now. I think I put in almost close to fifty to sixty thousand dollars in work on the house. Deciding roof, new septic, new water, all, everything you could imagine to that house, electrical, updated, everything you could imagine to that house. And becoming a new homeowner, I was obviously busy with work, starting a family, all the things. I had zero clue what was going on behind my house and I wish I knew a little bit more with that construction. Because again, right, like I had no idea that was happening there. But besides that, right, Sliders, right, whoever was speaking for them, honestly, there's not a single Saturday or Sunday night where that load, that, that whole road is lined up with cars. On top of it, you can't even see over a little hill coming down Episcopal, like when you pull out of Vivian Drive and there's cars lined up all the way down it. It's a very, it's a very dangerous, right, that area? But also, right, I'm living on the underside. I'm also a pretty big sports man. I'm not going to go sit outside if I can't hear what I'm watching. To be honest with you, there is a lot of noise that comes from over there. The parking is horrendous, almost to the point of where it's not even someplace I'd even want to go to. But again, right, it's extremely loud. I can hear it from a little bit further down than these guys here. But I have two little kids. I have one that's twenty months. I have one that's turning four months, or four weeks tomorrow. And again, right, like there's the construction in the back I'm waking up to, I'm up at night with all the noises from the cars and from Sliders. I got two little kids, work, a lot of things I got going on and I haven't been too happy with the area since I've moved in from all those things that have been going on. Like I said, they, from what, what I've heard from what the gentleman had said, there's not a single night where if it's football, Sunday night football, if it's a UFC fight, if it's a big event, a boxing event, there is zero parking as it is in that lot. The entire road is lined up with cars. It's been several times over the last several months, it's been difficult for me to even get on a Vivian Drive. Your accidents are just there being too much congestion in that area. But the noise, I'm not from Berlin, but I've been here for four years. I'm up from, I'm from Litchfield. It's much quieter over there. So it was a little bit different. I lived in the country, right? But up here, right, the construction in the back kind of threw me off. Sliders with that parking has kind of been a little bit crazy. I chose that house because I really wanted to start my family and build there. And I put a lot of money into that house from a foreclosed house that had no running water to make it a very beautiful property on that street and a place where I see raising my kids. But with continued things like this, it doesn't seem like the place where I might want to stay too much longer. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Wanta. I live at 222 Episcopal Room. I'm diagonally across from Sliders. And I hate to reiterate what has already been said, but parking is crazy. You can take up more of the parking lot and still have enough room for all the cars. The March Madness, they're lined up and down the street. Yeah, I'm constantly picking up broken beer bottles from guys pre-gaming for my front yard. I can't have my kid playing in the front yard anymore, seven years old. The profanity of people yelling and screaming. You know, at night sound travels, but they're quite loud, even when they're talking. Yeah, it's crazy. I lived in my house, I bought it 15 years ago, after Beckley's and before Sliders. And it's just progressively gotten worse. I had that bad accident, it was a month ago, it was on March 28th. We were all pretty scared, it was, it was a bad accident, both cars ended up knocked in the road. That was someone coming out of Sliders. But like Jim, Jimmy already said, we've seen some, a young kid die right on the corner of our street. And all the, all the extra traffic from the commercial construction, we don't need any more traffic on other down the street. It's a one lane, both ways, double yellow line, and we have passing. It's just dangerous riding, dangerous driving. I used to ride my bike, I grew up Vivian Drive, I used to ride my bike up and down Episcopal with no problem. And I wouldn't even think of letting my kid go past my street light, or my, my front light towards the road. I almost have a heart attack every time he wants to go check the mailbox. Please no. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
Just one more, I forgot to mention that you constantly have cars making U-turns in our driveways. Never has.
Hello, my name is Ronnie Thie, I live 150 Episcopal Road, which is on a corner of Vivian Drive. I live probably about four or five houses down from Episcopal. And on weekends, in the evening, when you're sitting in your backyard, just relaxing, you can hear all the people when they're coming out of the bar at night and they're getting drunk. Now, I understand that this is a bar and people get drunk. But now, now you're going to be having more people getting drunk outside and yelling and getting rambunctious and being loud. And I can hear them five houses down at my house, and they're out there, and now they're going to be outside. Like usually, we can just hear the people that are going outside to smoke. Where the people that are walking from the bar to their cars, the couples that are arguing because somebody flirted with somebody else, and they're hating each other in the street, and they're, they're yelling at each other. And this is what we hear on a like weekend basis. And I've had people walk down my street and throw full beer cans at my dogs because my dogs bark at them. So I, I don't think they need to extend the drinking to the outside. I understand that they have their, they've already been approved for the dining area, but they don't need to be drinking outside, that's just going to make it so much louder and so much more notches on the weekends. And it's, it's just too much, you know, it's, it's, you guys wouldn't want them in your backyard. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Your name, ma'am?
My name is Corinna, and I live on Episcopal Road, 150.
Thank you. Additional comments in addition to the application? Any comments in favor of the application? Is anybody online that wants to speak to this application?
I may need to remind them to unmute themselves.
If you're online and you want to speak to the application, please unmute yourself.
The only other element that I want to add is, insofar as the noise of the use, that might be something that the EBA during deliberations is discussing, those could be added to any decision, one way or the other, in terms of hours or time.
Can I have you guys clarify something on the application? One gentleman against it referred to a variance, but the application is not listed variance, hardships are not part of this discussion here. They're only going for alcohol use on the location, right?
Right.
That is true. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Noted it and then forgot to clarify that.
There are a lot of issues here, but that's not.
A lot of the issues were about noise and the concern of more alcohol outside to make more noise on top of the noise. I think people get nervous talking up there, they lose track.
You're going to talk, you have to come up to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I don't know the protocol. I just, you know, I know myself when I get up here, you know, I've never been up here talking in front of you. And so of course I get a little nervous. But I know with the people here, we've talked amongst ourselves over the years, and the concern is the alcohol permit outside. Because the reasoning is, is that we hear a lot of noise, the fights from the, the couples coming out, or people are just out there having a good time, whooping it up in their heads, smoking their cigarettes, and they're loud. You know, they're leaving the bar, hey, Joe, have a good night, you know, things like that. And then, like I said, the fight's profanity. And so it's whether, whatever you want to call, they have the acceptance from the town for their patio. We're opposed against the alcohol being out there, no matter what time it would be of the day or evening, because it's going to be disruptive to all the residential people that live so close by. Because with, you know, it just comes with the alcohol. Whether they said, well, we wouldn't, we, you know, might not put a speaker outside, we normally mute them. That's like, you know, normal, we might, you know? Sliders turns on the TVs when they want to turn on the TVs. And like they said, if you're outside watching a ballgame or whatever, and people just tend to get a little more expressive and a little louder with a few drinks in. And it will be louder. And, you know, 10 o'clock could go to 11, who knows, to 12. 10 o'clock at night is a pretty late night on a weeknight. And then, you know, the bar's open till 1:30 on the weekends. So I just don't want to get, you know, again, there's a lot of issues and people get tied up with things, but we're all very concerned about the noise factor of having alcohol permit to serve outside.
Correct.
Just to clarify, thank you very much again.
None of you should ever feel nervous about talking to us. We're you, we're just, we're just, we're from town. So we're just regular people, just like all of you. So if that's what they say, say it.
Good question.
You have to come up.
It's not that we're trying to make you go in front of people, but it helps the secretary who has to take the minutes.
Okay. Good question. So they were approved for a dining area last year, but they want to move dining area to their parking lot, right? Do they need another permit for that because they need to make it more permanent?
So there's Maureen speaking, and I'm just going to clarify who you are, you're.
Amelia.
You're Amelia. For the secretary, I'm sorry, she's listening, I suppose, watching who's up here. On the, they, COVID executive orders allowed outdoor dining until March of next year. Any of the restaurants who have asked to create permanent outdoor spaces that go beyond March of next year have had to come or will have to go through the planning and zoning commission for a site plan amendment. And then Sliders has done that already, they did that in February, I believe it was February of this year, that they got their approval, it was not a public hearing, it was a site plan amendment. So it was publicly noticed, it was a meeting and everything, it just was not a public hearing like this. This is the public hearing where the public speaks at it. The, and they got that approval to have seating outdoors in this area enclosed by the fencing, the way they showed it on the plant.
Okay.
That was approved by the planning and zoning commission for those tables.
Okay, so I understand now, but my concern still is a permanent dining area. Because I know we all against alcohol because it makes more noise, more people are healthier. But dining area will increase traffic also, increase people, increase traffic, increase cars, and of course, increase noise even without alcohol. So that's, thank you.
I got a question.
I'm going to make you walk all the way up here. Potion is lotion, that's what the doctor told me.
Right.
Got a bridge I want to sell you too, that's all right.
All right, my question is, they've already been approved for an outside dining in this spot. Is that, and that didn't require a public here?
No. Because it's a, it's a site plan amendment, which is just a method of approvals through, it's not one of the categories that would require a public here.
Well, they really didn't have.
Amendment still require.
They didn't have outside dining unless until the pandemic.
It, it, it's the, it's the way the zoning regulations are written, that would not have required a public here. Some types of approvals require a public hearing, some do not. Applications before this board, for the, almost all of the applications they see require a public hearing. Some applications that go before the planning and zoning commission require a public hearing, others do not. That was not in the categories that required a public.
If it wasn't during.
Amendment as opposed to a special.
If it wasn't during the pandemic, it could still. Are they limited to capacity of the restaurant?
Yes. I do not have that file in front.
Including the outside.
Yeah, it's capacity.
Of the property.
Yes.
So you're saying that they would not be able to have any more people on that property than they have now?
That's my recollection from the, the meeting, that was a February meeting, I'm doing my best to remember the details of it. But that approval, my recollection is that the capacity was going to stay. The same or very similar, because it was a trade-off of tables.
Does anybody ever check capacity? I mean, when the cars are lined up down the whole street, and they're parking a lot of sport. I mean, it seems to me that there's, when the wires shoulder to shoulder, this is just.
Um, again, that, that is an enforcement issue.
Yeah, well, who does that?
Overall capacity.
Overall capacity, fire marshal.
All right, so we see a whole street lined up in there, then we should call a fire marshal, ask them to go into that car.
I will check into that. I can't, I can't give you that answer whether, whether he goes in and checks that. Like, or whether it's a PD thing or what. If we get it as a zoning violation against them, then we, then report, you know, have to deal with it as a zoning violation. That's what we have chart or charts of zoning violations.
One other point I would like you to consider is the apartment building that's going to be built in his backyard, it's going to add how many cars that are trying to get out onto Episcopal. And there's only half the road available because the other thing is lane with slider cars. That's another safety issue that we have to live with. Thank you.
Thank you. On a personal note, and I'll, I'll say it, and I'll probably get myself in trouble, but when I went down that street and I saw those cars lined up, the first thing that came to my mind was there should be a parking ban in that street. But that's not my business.
There is on one side. How do we, how do we address that?
Police Commission.
Police Commission. Okay.
Any more comments? Any more comments?
I think Ryan was waving. As a member of the Police Commission, we meet every third Wednesday of every month, and public are welcome to any meeting to speak about that.
Did everybody hear that?
Yeah.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Okay, any more comments, comments else that? I'm going to motion to close the hearing on this part of the application. Second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's closed. Application ZVA 2021-10, 2378 Berlin Turnpike, map 27-2, block 119, lot 6. Ken Walling, KMK Plumbing and Heating, is requesting an approval for a change of non-conforming uses for Berlin's on a relation 4C3E for a plumbing and heating company to replace a fiber optic contractor. Factory is owned by Thomas Bukowski and his own BT2, speaking for the application.
Yeah, hi, everyone, my name's Ken Walling.
Hi, Ken.
So, so basically, we, we're a, we're a small, small family-owned, excuse me, plumbing and heating contractor out of Middlefield. And what we're basically trying to do is move, move, move our outfit into, into this property here. We currently have an intent to purchase this property, depending on the approval of this zoning change. We, we, we do, we do, we currently have two employees for plumbing and heating. Not a lot of, not a lot of traffic in and out, basic, basic hours, 7 to 4:30. And, you know, we're, we're, we're looking to get this, this changed, if possible.
What do you intend to keep on the property?
I guess there's a, there's a list of items on the, on the application there, but we have, we have two, two plumbing and heating vans. We have a plow truck. Couple of, couple of trailers, flatbed trailer, and an enclosed trailer. Not, not many items, you know, we, we plan on getting in there and, you know, cleaning the place up. We're really, you know, we're really. um, you know, cleaning the place up. Um, we're really, you know, we're really aggressive. Um, you know, we want to, um, like I said, clean the place up, you know, get the building painted. Obviously, it's, it's ours, so we're gonna take a really good care of it. Ho- hopefully, that's the intent here.
Steph, didn't we just approve this fiber optic not to me, not to Lando?
Yes, that was, uh, March twenty nineteen. It's the same type of application, just fence replaced with fiber optic. Now it's plumbing and heating.
Okay, I remember me properly.
Yeah.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions? For Ken?
I have a question. It may not be so serious, but Ken, do you describe yourself and your business as less objectionable than what was there before?
I, I would say so. I would say less or just as.
It can be the same. Just as.
The, the same, yes.
Uh, questions? Any, Ryan, any questions?
No, this sounds pretty straightforward.
I think, uh, economic director Chris Edge had his hand raised.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Oh. It's a public input, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, I've been working closely with Ken. This property is an industrial building located in the BT two zone. BT two allows retail, restaurant, and office. This building, as you can see from the picture, is up off the road. It is not a building that would work for those uses. Um, yes, we did come through with the fiber optic, uh, company a little over two years ago. Building went on the market, the fiber optic company could not come up with a number that they would buy the property, that the property owner was okay with. They left town. Uh, Ken and KMK has come in and we're excited he's gonna be coming in. Hopefully, this commission will be amenable to it. Um, business, uh, locally owned business. He's in Middlefield bringing it here. He's gonna clean up the property and, uh, uh, create some jobs here in town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
I have no other questions.
If you have other questions, any other comments, uh, from staff or from, uh, public comments in favor of the application?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Attorney Penter.
Yeah. Um, uh, thank you, Maureen. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't represent Mr. Walling, but I do represent Mr. Bukowski, the owner of the property. And I would just submit that this appears to be a, uh, a less intensive use, uh, than, than the fiber optics company. I think there's less, less chance of having some heavy equipment, um, you know, um, cherry pick trucks, uh, those kinds of things in the driveway. I think this is a less intensive use and a good candidate, um, you know, for approval. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Penter. Any other comments? Comments in favor? Comments in opposition? Staff comments? Uh, we have a motion to close the hearing.
A second.
Motion. Uh, made a seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, ZB A twenty twenty-one dash eleven, uh, two ten Main Street, map nine dash three, block fifty-four, lot thirteen. Jeffrey Basset and Dina Silvain Basset, property owners, are requesting variances for an early front yard of six feet when twenty-five feet is required and a southerly rear yard of twenty-three point seven five feet when forty feet is required in the R eleven zone for Berlin zoning regulations five B five or detached twenty-two foot by twenty-four foot to garage. Speaking for the application.
Uh, I am Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Penter, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I represent, uh, Jeffrey and Dinah Basset. Uh, Dinah is my paralegal. They're attempting, they own a property on, the house on Main Street that backs up to the pond. Um, as you, as you're probably well aware, the property drops off, uh, pretty severely from the, uh, street level down to the pond. Like, in fact, there's about a, uh, a ten-foot drop within the twenty-four feet from the proposed edge of the garage to the property line, and then another, uh, another five to ten-foot drop to the edge of the pond. Um, basically, the hardship that we're talking about here, I think, is more obvious than maybe some that we see here. Um, due to the triangular shape of the lot and due to the slopes of the lot, there really isn't, uh, you know, another spot that's viable to put this garage because the, the back of the property just slopes downhill pretty severely. Um, right now, I believe they have a parking area, um, a level parking area that's adjacent to the house, and that's essentially the site of where this garage would be erected. Uh, there just are no good places due to the configuration of the lot and due to the slopes of the land, uh, to locate this, this structure.
Is there any information, is there any information available on the garage height?
Uh, I believe I talked to Adam about that and it was, um, the peak of the garage, I believe, was, it's gonna be within the zoning. I think the, the mean peak was, uh, either fifteen or eighteen feet. It's within the zoning regulation, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, this is, uh, Z O Adam, uh, by this. So when I spoke with Attorney Penter, I noticed that it was eighteen feet, which if the mean height of the roof is eighteen, that wouldn't be permissible. Uh, the clarification was that that was the peak of the roof. So the average height would be yeah, between eighteen and ten, so twelve, thirteen, something where, when they applied for the building permit, submitted plans for the garage, you'd be below the fifteen.
So it's basically a garage with, uh, just a crossway up in the attic type of thing.
It's a single-story garage, Mr. Chairman. That's correct.
Thank you.
This is Maureen speaking. They, um, a detached accessory structure, a garage, is limited to fifteen feet in from the mean height of the roof, not to the peak, but to the mean, and one story. It's limited to that size.
Okay. Any questions?
Roger, you're six, six feet from the road. Is that gonna be six feet from the setback?
It's six feet from the setback, uh, Glenn. It's, um, it's six feet from the property line, which is obviously set back from the street line, um, or from the, from the edge of the sidewalk. It's probably, um, just looking at the map, it's probably, uh, ten to twelve feet off the road or twelve feet off the road or so. Um, depending on how you're measuring it, uh, it's, it's close.
I know where, I know where the property is. And it's gonna be close coming in there.
It's the only place where we have some, some level of ground to put it, actually.
Well, the entrance is on the twenty-four foot side, I'm, I'm assuming.
It's on the side, yes. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be, uh, you won't be backing onto Main Street. That's correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so the twenty-four foot side is where the, uh, double door.
The front of the garage, yes, the front of the garage.
Yeah, this is zoning officer Adam. So applicant, correct me if I'm incorrect, but, uh, I believe the garage is basically going over where the stone pad is here in the street view. So they gotta give you a sense of how far it is from the actual curb line. Based on.
All right.
I'm reading correctly. The house was purchased in nineteen, correct?
Pardon me?
Property attorney?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, two thousand nineteen. A little slower.
You think? You're wondering tonight, Tony.
I'm with it, okay.
It'll be tomorrow. It's like a motion to close.
All right. Any further questions?
I have none.
Great. About, uh, about Ryan?
I'm good.
And you're good, too, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition to the application? Adam, uh, staff comments, you had a letter, I think, uh?
Yeah, there was, there was one letter that came in, uh, it was yesterday, and it's posted to the website at the time for the, uh, for the twenty-four hour notice. Um, it was an anonymous neighbor letter that, uh, basically just was concerned about sightlines and that because it's a bit of a, bit of a curve. Um, and, uh, in, in general, the location of the garage is setback a bit. I'll let the board determine whether or not they think that impacts the, the sightline. So the straight view is about as good as we can get in terms of right now determining that. But that was the one voiced opposition. Otherwise, staff don't really have.
Actually, should we read that letter to the minister?
Um, you don't need to. It was posted. I can put it up on the screen here.
Okay. Just, I mean, just to cover our bases.
Sure, sure. This is the letter that was received yesterday, uh, to commit my concern as a homeowner in Kensington for twenty years. I am concerned for the impact that a structure will impose on my line of sight, it's in my driveway. Also, structural impact, the wildlife of the Matabasset Waterway and block of beautiful public view of the pond from the sidewalk and road. Please curb the overdevelopment of our town. Thank you for your understanding and cause for concern. That was received yesterday.
Any other comments? Uh, comments that you with the application? Comments in?
May I just, may I just comment, Mr. Chairman, on that, uh, sightline issue?
Sure, go ahead.
It just appears that, you know, fortunately, from the way that Main Street curves, it comes in from the, uh, well, it comes in from the, a better angle. It doesn't curve from behind the, uh, structure. It, Main Street kinda curves from the other side so that it provides, uh, a little better sightline than if the road was coming from behind the structure. But again, there really aren't any viable, uh, viable alter, alternatives, and, um, it's not that much farther back than the existing house, which is non-conforming as it is. Uh, most of the properties, uh, this house and the two adjoining ones are pretty much all non-conforming to begin with.
And cars are going in and out of that, uh, uh, area already, so, so I'm sure that would really, uh, be the issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Make a motion to close the hearing. Motion made a seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Our last application is, uh, ZB A twenty twenty-one dash twelve, seven ninety-seven Farmington Avenue. Map nine dash one, block twenty-eight, lot thirty-one B. Ellen. Sekujnaden. Sekujnaden?
Sekujnaden.
Oh, Sekujnaden. Business and property owner is requesting alcohol use location approval or on premises beer and wine liquor permit at Cornerstone Restaurant and Wine Bar per Berlin zoning regulation eleven B. Property is owned CCD two and speaking for the application. Ellen.
Hello, everyone. I mean, there's a few more left, I knew it. My name is Alan Sekujnaden. I'm, uh, I'm the one of the owners of Red Box Milltown. I'm brother the owner for, uh, since two thousand fifteen, April. Do have, uh, a lot of customers from Berlin. Let's, may us come here, uh, it's, I'm, I'm really, it's, I'm, it's, we're not. The re, the reason I applied for, uh, wine and beer, not for full liquor, because, uh, you were doing a drive-by. Uh, you were drinking in a Berlin line, and, uh, there is some areas you didn't really like, and I'll be no one that can, uh, rob inside of Berlin. Uh, if you do it in a full liquor, then that would be a problem. If someone gets too many shots or something, then there is, there definitely would be accidents on happening. There's been, uh, fine dining over there. There's a fine open fine dining. Uh, wine and beer only, so people can come enjoying their, uh, glass of wine, nice meal. And I gotta thank also Adam. He was going through hell with me with his, uh, paperwork. I didn't know what I'm doing anyway, because never done it before. Every time is different. Uh, so he been trying to explain to me over the phone, emails, but finally he got everything right. If you have any questions, feel free. I'll answer if I can, uh.
Just so I can clarify, there's nothing really live entertainment or anything like that. It's just dining and?
Our restaurant is gonna be as these forty seats. So imagine putting no entertainment, that would not really be coming.
Just wanted to confirm.
Uh, any questions from, uh, you? Would you?
Any comments here, uh, Mr. Chairman? Uh, in favor or, uh, I'm attorney Richard Penter. I have the property that's across Harding Street. I'm, uh, in favor of this development. I think it's, uh, the type of development that we kind of, that, uh, center of town needs and, uh, uh, very much in favor, but I think it'll, uh, he's, I think the property will be, uh, upgraded and both in use and in appearance.
Thank you, Attorney Penter. Uh, Chris Edge, any comments?
Yes, absolutely. I've been, um, actually, um, recruiting slash stalking the family for the last couple of years. Um, it, it's true. Um, I'm very excited. They have an amazing operation down in Middletown. Um, and I'm very excited. They purchased the former even Stevens, gonna be putting a new face on it, a new look, a new everything. So very excited about it and helping to bring our Farmington Avenue back one ribbon cutting at a time. So I'm very excited that, uh, Alan's here and, uh, very much in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna add that Chris is one hell of a stalker, and, uh, we're lucky to have him around.
This is one of them meetings.
I really hope we never have to produce a transcript.
Actually, my son lives around the corner. My son goes there all the time.
I drive by it every day.
It's a corner condominium, but.
Bridge crossing. Bridge crossing?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, um, any comments in favor? Any comments in opposition? Staff comments?
Uh, insofar as staff comments, uh, Alan came and got the restaurant approval for changing out from the old Eaton Stevens to a new use. I'm putting, uh, renovations in the interior, coordination with myself and building department that, uh, currently in the works for understanding for fixes of the exterior as well, so.
Only concern that I kinda see with that piece of property there is maybe having a, a, an issue with parking. It's probably, uh, it'd be a problem at some point in the future. Maybe it's a good problem for you.
No, we love that problem. It's only going to be six, seven tables and another ten seats to bar. So you better come with your, better happy month, probably.
Oh, Chairman, if I, if I may, just in the tone of announcing complaints that things received, we did receive the one letter from the neighbor that someone sent in an email with concerns about the alcohol use that was sent to the central board. Basically, it would be that's the liquor location.
Part of the bracket.
Yeah, it was part of the bracket. This one came last week, so.
Yeah, she called me up to.
I should.
Yeah, she called me up and asked. I answered any questions she, I could, but honestly, she was asking me that was a concern restaurant or?
Yeah, so the email to myself from Patricia Buckbarrow.
I thought I phoned for the investor a few days. So thanks to you, everyone has my number now.
Oh, the others' letters?
Yeah. Much art. Explain to them what I'm doing and how people are fine with it. She said, yeah, we answered any questions for her, so.
Good morning. I'd like to just clarify for the record that it is a restaurant beer and wine approval that they're looking for and that we don't allow a cafe permit, which is a straight up bar permit for the most part. That's what they're called. This is a restaurant beer wine that's applied for.
I have a question for staff. I'm just looking at the GIS page in the packet and it's like the building is splitting two properties.
The, the GIS is not exactly pencil accurate or, or fine tooth accurate. The, the lot is smaller and typically shaped down on the corner there. Effect from my recollection of the site plan last, recent surveys, basically the, the property line ends up like just past the wall. Since, you know, if you're standing next to the building, you might actually be on neighboring parts of the lot. But the building itself doesn't appear, like I said, if I recall correctly, to be split in a property line. It is a small one.
The parking on that side of the building is on the adjacent property, the garage property that's next door. That's where the parking that goes one, two story section is on the next door property. It's not his parking. His parking is pretty much going to be to the front, a little bit around the side. And nonconforming, existing nonconforming and it's just been that way.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Make a motion to close the hearing in this application. Insert all the comments. You know, so if nothing else, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application.
I'll second.
A motion made and seconded in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. All in favor? CBA twenty twenty-one dash oh eight twenty-five seventy-six Pearl Turnpike, man, twenty-seven one block one twenty, lot seven. Samuel Alejandro, Maine Auto of Berlin is requesting a motor vehicle location approval for used car dealership for Berlin zoning regulation eleven R. Property Zone BT one is owned by MJ TK LLC, Kevin O'Sullivan. Uh, I'll make a motion to conditionally approve this, uh, this application based on two items. Number one, be right away be reviewed for the, from the state of Connecticut and Department of Transportation. And number two, I think, Adam, you said that there was some cleanup work that was complete, needed to be completed in the back. So I would make a motion to provide conditional approval for this based on those two stipulations.
But at this time, that parking would be not usable. We can't wait. It's not, am I correct?
Yep.
So no parking in the right of way unless they obtain state approval, that they have to clean up the, continue to clean up the water, car that are theirs. And then would this be the point as well where we would say that a maximum of fifty cars in the rear lot? Would be the only thing I would add additionally, Tony.
That sounds good. Sounds, uh, that sounds good. If you want to add that, so we got fifty car maximum. No cars are gonna stay right away until that's approved and further cleanup of the rear lot. So those are the three issues or three items that need to be taken care of. Initial approval based on those items being taken care of or addressed. Second, that one.
I ask for a clarification on that. So if they were to obtain lease from the state, would you want them to return to the board or can we do that administratively?
I'd be, I think administratively.
Agree.
Sure. Just covering our bases, that's all.
I'll make sure. Covering mine, too.
So we have a motion made and seconded. Motion made, made seconded. Anybody want to add or retract to that? All in favor?
Uh, I'll take the roll for
Go ahead.
Chairman?
Aye.
Let me tell us.
Aye.
Aye.
Cory White side?
Aye.
Ryan Zeller?
Aye.
Okay. That's approved. Uh, CBA twenty twenty-one dash oh nine one ninety-seven Episcopal Road, that four dash four block eighty-one, lot seven. Jeff Carbone, Olive Branch Enterprises LLC is requesting an alcohol use location approval for an outdoor patio liquor permit at Slater's Grill and Bar, Berlin's zoning regulation eleven B. Property is on GI two and is owned by F. Holland Enterprises LLC, Fred Marc Antonio. I'll make a motion to approve this application for discussion purposes.
Second for discussion.
Okay, I, I, I have to present my, my point of view on this and I'm not very after hearing all of, all the comments tonight, I, I find it very difficult to take an existing situation and exacerbate it even more with an outdoor patio. In other words, we've got a situation there now that, that's causing some problems in the area. And adding an outdoor patio with, with alcohol use and the outdoor patio would only act exacerbate the existing situation. Uh, I think the existing situation needs to be clarified, cleaned up, rectified. Something needs to be done before we can go ahead and approve an outdoor patio with alcohol use in a permanent outdoor patio. And, and, and I guess, you know, that's my own, my, my view of this based on all the comments that we've heard tonight. It's almost like throwing gasoline into a fire. Okay, and, and I, I don't feel that, that, that's the right thing to do based on what I've heard from the you know, from the public comments that we've had back here. Any other comments?
I have to agree with you, Mr. Chairman. It's complaints from the neighborhood and actually seeing the parking down there and driving on that road personally. I'd have to agree. It's, it's I think we're only gonna make it worse in that area for everybody that lives there. This is an establishment that's basically in a residential area. You know, there's a lot of houses and a lot of kids and families around there.
Any additional comments? Anybody have any other input?
I'm agree with you guys.
We have a motion made and seconded for discussion purposes. I'm not sure where we go from here at this point because again, it's a it's a difficult situation right now and I, I think if we went ahead with this, we'd be making the situation maybe even more difficult. I'm, I'm a little bit unshy about doing anything with this because of, because of that, because of the comments that we've heard tonight. And because of some of the issues, the accidents and, you know, some of the safety issues that we also encountered in that area. So my, my tendency is to not try to, like I said, exacerbate something that's already a problem. And make it even more.
We need a motion to I'll make a motion that we deny.
So, so it's usually our recommendation that you make a motion to approve so that we have affirmative motions and then the vote would fail to carry. Or so you need four to carry the vote and it's been always advised to me that CBA's make the motion in favor so that it's clear what the board is looking to do. You need a, a vote of four in favor for our motion to carry.
Okay, so I, there are any other comments? I guess, you know, are there any comments pros, cons? The comments are, you know, for the good of the order? If not, I mean, we have a motion made, seconded, and a closed hearing on the application and take a vote, vote call.
The, the, here's the motion. So did you make a motion?
But there really is no other, there really is no discussion, motion for discussion when you're really down to it. Because every motion is discussable.
Right.
Okay, you have a
Right, a motion is
So a motion is to if we really wanted to get that.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, to legal, I'll be legal and make a motion to approve this application.
You have to retract the other application, the other
Right, I'll retract the motion to approve for discussion purposes. Make a motion to approve this application. I think Sandra?
Yeah, I'll still second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. We had some discussion on it. Any further discussion? If not, we can take a roll call.
Chairman?
Nay.
Nay.
Sandra Capola?
Nay.
Cory White side?
Nay.
Ryan Zeller?
Nay.
That's unanimous. Application, CBA twenty twenty-one dash ten, Ken Wallen, KMK Plumbing and Heating.
Make a motion to accept the application.
Second.
Discussion?
Accept or approve?
We accept and approve.
All these three words.
It's all the same.
This is a CBA twenty twenty-one twenty twenty-one dash ten for KMK Plumbing and Heating. I have a motion made and seconded in discussion. Okay, maybe you can take a roll here.
Chairman?
Aye.
How many times?
Aye.
Sandra Capola?
Aye.
Cory White side?
Aye.
Ryan Zeller?
Aye.
Okay, and the next application is CBA twenty twenty-one dash eleven. T ten Main Street, Jeffrey to set and Dino Solane to set are requesting bearings to support an early front yard of six feet with twenty-five is required and a rear yard of twenty-three point seven five with forty is required in the R eleven zone. Were detached twenty-two foot by twenty-four foot two car garage. I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, Adam, please take roll.
Chairman?
Aye.
Randy Tubbs?
Aye.
Sandra Capola?
Aye.
Cory White side?
Aye.
Ryan Zeller?
Aye.
And that's approved, okay. CBA twenty twenty-one, that's twelve, seven ninety-seven Farmington Avenue. At nine one block twenty-eight, lot thirty-one B. Alan Sekujnaden, business and property owner, requesting an alcohol use location approval for an on premises beer and wine liquor permit at Cornerstone Restaurant and Wine Bar. For Berlin's zoning regulation eleven B. Property is on CCD two.
I make a motion, we approve the application.
I'll second it for bearing lines.
Have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, Alan. Adam, please. Congratulations, Alan, right now. Adam, please, uh, roll call.
Chairman?
Aye.
Randy Tubbs?
Aye.
Sandra Capola?
Aye.
Cory White side?
Aye.
Ryan Zeller?
Aye.
Uh, thank you, okay.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, Christopher. Uh, we have approval for the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting. The comments on the April meeting. The only person that's not here to approve is Nelson, but everybody else was here to approve. Uh, to draw Franklin and Tubbs, White side and Zeller. I told people to approve the minutes for April twenty twenty-one. Anybody have any comments on the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the April minutes. A motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I think that's it.
Return?
Second.
Time goes to the one.
Is it, is it nine o'clock?
It's.
Oh, my God.
Vote aye before we hit that.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Ryan.
Aye.
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 Night.
Right.
When we make, when we make a motion.